Start the post floor flight. Welcome you all here tonight, thank you. Open up our public hearing for public comment on the general sewer and electric budgets. So the floor is open.
I would like to know, I noticed here that you have 16% that you gave to the electric employees for a raise. The three and the five percent, I can understand. Why did you give that 16% for the first year? I understand it's three-year contract because you opened the contract last year and gave them a raise. Now you give them another raise. You're giving 16% for that one year for the rest of the other two years. The thing is, I worry about the general budget and I would like to know what their wages are now because I'm concerned when you use the electric people for a time and a half, is that close to $75, $100 an hour?
No.
What do they get now?
Uh... Thirty-eight... Thirty-eight, seventy-three, somewhere around there.
What is that?
Thirty-eight, seventy-three, right around there.
So you gave them 16%, but I'm concerned because you're not only giving us 16%, but you're also, the pennies are going to be off. And the thing I'm concerned about is not so much the electric budget, but the general budget. You'll always have to watch that general budget because that's going to get hit. And if you're using these guys to mow lawn or pick up rubbish or whatever, I'm really concerned with that price.
It varies. We're trying to allocate their hours out of the electric. The main time is in the wintertime and we've already gone over with the DPW guys. We're going to keep the electric guys out of the snow as much as we can. I don't think you'll see us plowing sidewalks on overtime. We've got two guys. We're going to utilize those two to do a lot of what's being done, say by Nick, the electric crew in here. They're aware of that. We negotiated in the contract where if they do snow, any snow removal on overtime, they get, they, they're not getting, they're going to take comp time for the time and a half. It'd be straight time for them and the other half would go towards comp time that they have to use in that calendar before May 31st or they lose it. Just to save money in that regard. I know what you're saying. I was, I'm thinking the same thing. So we're trying to utilize the guys as little as we have to. We are a very small village here with only a couple of DPW guys. There are times when you gotta have other, our other guys help. So there are going to be some times, but I believe Courtney's got at least 80% of their hours is strictly electric. The 16%, right, yeah, we did give them a raise last year, it was 1%. It's only 1%. And that's, a lot of that came from the COVID area.
Really? 1%?
One. They got an extra 1%.
Extra 1%?
Not 1%.
Well, you're saying you opened, you know, we did. We gave them one extra percent.
And that equal, how much was that then? The extra 1%, how much was that?
Well, we're worried by the different wages of the, you know, they're all different wages.
No, no, no. Do you have a, do you have a list of what you're actually paying your employees? How you have, you have two electricians, you have a sewer gentleman, you have, what, two regular workers?
Yes, two DPW workers.
Okay, what I'd like to know, and I think what we're concerned about is what is the hourly wage of these people? And what percentage of each budget is for just wages alone? Because I'm concerned with all these wages that you're giving these people. We're not going to have enough money left over to do maintenance and projects that we have to do for the village.
Well, we're not raising taxes, so it's not a matter of the money.
It's gotta come from someplace.
Well, yeah, but I'm saying we're doing very well. The general budget's doing very well now.
It is because it always was kinda iffy with the general budget.
You've got the numbers, I mean...
But what I'm saying is, I don't want 40% of the general budget to go for wages. I'd like to know what the percentages are for each budget for wages.
If Courtney was here, he could tell you that. Unfortunately, he's not here.
Could you give me those things? I mean, you can email me, call me.
Definitely, you know, because a certain percentage of the girls in the offices, wages are split up between general sewer and electric.
Right.
Courtney's wages are split like that.
I guess they're not getting 16%, are they?
What's that?
They're not getting the 16% increase.
No, that's just the linemen.
Yeah.
Linemen, you say, well, why so high? The going rate for linemen now is very high.
Yeah. What's the average going rate for a lineman? I mean, because you can't compare, you can't compare the village of Virgin with the village of Airport. That's like apples and oranges.
Well, yes and no. Because if you don't pay these people, they will leave. Okay?
But Nick's been here over 20 years.
Nick's been, that's right.
How long have they been working here? The linemen, how long have they been?
Nick's probably going on 20 and Matt, probably six. What's that, what's that got to do with anything else?
Because they said they'd leave, but I mean, it seems to me someone who's worked here 20 years has a certain comfort level, you know, likes his job. That counts, that counts when people consider whether they're leaving.
I'm not saying it's not only financial. I'm not saying not to give them wages. I'm just stuck on that 16%.
Well, if they would've gotten more in the last couple contracts, it wouldn't be 16%.
Well, why can't you buy it by the time?
They weren't brought up how they should have been before. The going rate, there, there's no lineman out there to hire anymore. They've been cherry picked. National Grid, RGE, NICE has cherry picked all, all linemen. I can't hire one off the street. I just can't say, okay, let's go there and we'll hire somebody. I can't do that. OSHA regulation says they gotta have two certified linemen here.
Can I, can I interject something?
Sure, Anna.
First of all, I really think it's important that you have an accurate wage list for the employees so that we can understand what it is they're making now and understand the increases that you're making. And, you know, as far as people leaving, I guess I take issue with that. It's not just money. This is a wonderful working environment and you know that, Joe. And these guys, in all the negotiations that I was part of, in all of the wage increases that I was part of, in anything that happened, we negotiated honestly together. It was not somebody pulling numbers out of a hat or anything like that. And those numbers were accepted because there was always a little give and take with it. And it was not always the number. There were other things. And I don't think anybody looking at our village can say that our employees are not treated fairly, do not have a wonderful work environment, have great camaraderie with each other. It's more than the money. It's more than the money. It's being here and doing the job here, which they do a great job. But, but to give them extra money upon extra money upon extra money because they might go somewhere, I don't think that's a good reason. I don't think that's a good reason at all.
Look, you know, you can like it all you want here, and they do like it here, but you still have to support your family. And when it gets starting to get thinner and thinner and thinner, and you looked at RGE, I've got the numbers here.
RGE is in a great situations where they're going to have to travel with their young families there at home.
They're also going to make...
But we don't know what they're making.
I know what they're making, RGE.
But we don't know that.
The money, the money is out there now for these linemen and they're getting it. They're dict, you know, the market dictates what they can get. And you either pay it or people leave. We just lost Zach to Churchville for more money.
That wasn't the case.
What's that?
That was a personal issue.
He left with more money.
He would've stayed.
I'm not going to get into that.
No, I'm not going to get into it. But that's not the case.
Do you have a list, can you, does Courtney leave you a list of what the wages are of people? Because that's common knowledge. I'm not asking for something that's unreasonable.
No, no, for sure.
Because it's hard to look at a budget and say, you know, how much are wages for these? I mean, I'm not against anybody getting a raise. I'm just overwhelmed with the 16%.
Well, I mean, the linemen at RGE, here's what these guys look at. I usually say, well, they like it here, but here's, the linemen at RGE are getting 54, 69 an hour. And a foreman there is getting 61, 48. We're still way below them. We're, our guys right now are just going to be with Churchville electric guys. They're with Spencerport. You can call them places and get the wages. And then in years, in the next ensuing years, they're going to fall behind again. We're getting them up to where these guys are now. Their rate is around here now for the munis.
But Joe, I don't think you can compare them to RGE. They, they can't even scent their pills out right.
I'm not comparing, I'm just saying Jenny, that's the market and that's the dollar that they can go get. Okay? And then, do they, yeah, they stay why? Because we do, they have flexibility here, I'll grant you that.
And I grant you, it's a small municipality. We finally have gotten our lines in, our poles in. I mean, the electric department is excellent. When I was here like 30 years ago, if we had, we lost our electric. That doesn't happen anymore.
I know that.
The thing to take into account is that when you're making comparisons, it's really not a fair issue because, again, as Jenny said, we're a small municipality and our resources are restricted to that amount. Churchill and all the others are bigger. They have other resources that we don't have. So that really needs to be considered too. And mentioning that, it's hard to raise families. Well, we as taxpayers have to pay, have to pay money too. And we have bills to pay also, just like everybody else. But people, young people in here with families, they're not in a position where they can ask for raises like that either. They have to work within their parameters. And part of the fiscal responsibility of the board is to ensure the fact that you're keeping the village fiscally sound. And there are probably a lot of different ways that, that can be accomplished in doing the right thing for the right reasons. We've been compared to other places in the past so many times and it's just, just not it. And it's, it's already been pointed out. We have workers here who have been here for a long time and they wouldn't stay if the working conditions for them were not favorable. And that needs to be highly considered too. So when other residents find out, and wish more residents would pay attention, when they find out what they're getting, what, what kind of result is that going to be? And it's just not, it's just not a good situation. And you do the best you can with what you have and you cannot continue to make comparisons about big companies and, and other municipalities that are larger than us. Because we do not have those kind of resources to work with. And there's ways, there's ways to keep your people happy. And keep them happy.
I'm new here. Can I just ask a question?
Sure.
So it's a three-year contract?
Yes.
Was there a discussion of 16, 00, or like, I think you said 5, 5, and 5?
The 16, you know, Courtney's got the 16 in here. That, that brought them up to the market around here. Churchville is there now, Spencerport is there. We work hand in hand with these systems. A year from now, Churchville will get a raise and then they'll go ahead. And a year after that, they're giving another raise. We're going to go behind, behind, behind. We've been going behind, behind, behind. We're just trying to get everybody up to market value here. And you can't say we're a small system here because we generate, we sell a lot more power here than Churchville does, by far.
I'm talking about overall resources, Joe.
Well, we're talking the 16% or whatever. And our, our revenue is much more than Churchville. We, we're almost in the middle of all the 40 systems, how much power we deliver here. So you can't say we're small. And these guys do the same work. It's all, it's all line work. They run the department. They run it. We don't have a superintendent here. Nick runs the whole outfit over there. He engineers, he orders. I mean, these guys are top-notch line guys. You're not, you can't find them.
I think we understand the value of the people that have been here.
Then we should pay them for what they are.
Can't always do that. And not keep everything on an even keel. Somewhere along the way, something is going to get bypassed because the money's not there. And no matter what kind of projections you make, there's always some little chink in the armor that turns off unexpectedly, which you have no control over. Which is why you have to have some leeway. You just can't be paying out all the time.
Is there something else in the budget that you think is suffering?
I'm sorry?
Is there something else in the budget that you think is suffering for that increase?
Oh, I couldn't address that right now. A lot of what I'm saying also is, I'm a long-time resident. I've been here, is it 53 years now? 54 years? And there's been a lot of changes, mostly to the good. And there are just things that don't sit right with people. And it's unfortunate that more people do not come and ask questions and voice their opinion and maybe have some very good concrete suggestions. That would be helpful. But there's just a few that usually come in. That doesn't help the situation.
I have another question on the replacement of the equipment, the zero term mower. I mean, I know our mower gets a lot of use and stuff. Are they going to be safe in? Are they all safe in?
Generally, they are, Jenny. We usually, we sell these and we usually give back just about everything we paid for them because we do buy them.
Is the market still going through used stuff?
Yeah.
Because it was for a while and then the bottom fell out. That's why I'm asking.
It's been really good lately. The price of all the new equipment is so high now that the used stuff is going very high. So we get, you know, municipal price on these and then we're able to turn them over in a couple of years and sometimes make money on them, you know?
But you aren't going out on safe, safe bid or safe contract release?
Yes, we get my, it's a municipal pricing. Yes.
Okay. And then the other complaint I have, you're going to be glad I changed you, is the tank pumping. $140 to $280.
Right.
Did you guys actually go out to bid on this?
Yes.
And how many bids did you have?
Just one.
Why did you take that one? Why didn't you go out for a different bid and see if there's some more people out there? There's gotta be more than one person for bidding.
I believe there are, but AD Call's been doing it now for a number of years. They do a great job.
Well, they may do a wonderful job, but that's $100 more. I mean, you're not talking $20, $30. It's a $100 job.
I realize that. He, during the COVID, he called here and wanted us, you probably remember that. He wanted us to try to give him a break on the price, you know, to raise the price that he was charged because he was losing money during COVID because the price of the diesel fuel and the labor. So he was losing money on it. So we knew when this contract came in, the next contract, whoever got it was, it was going to be high. I think the problem, a lot of these companies that pump, they can't, they don't have big enough trucks where they can come in here and pump seven or 10 houses at a time to make it worth their while. I called, I called Barefoot even today because I'm still saying what's going on here. But Barefoot, they're at 325 a tank. So...
Is there a list that you can get, Joe, that you can call and say, you know, I mean, because that's, that's a big hit.
I know where it is, but everything's gone up since COVID. I mean...
Yeah, but that's, if it was 140, Joe, and went up to maybe 200 or 180, I could see it. But it's doubled. I mean, you know, you're gonna, so I'm assuming the general public is going to eat this, this price.
Well, we're going to have another meeting next month, a hearing on this, on that also, Jenny.
At what point would it be worth buying your own tanker to pump it out ourselves?
I don't know. There's a lot to it. It's not just a matter of pumping it and you gotta get rid of it.
Sure.
You gotta pay.
Yeah, and there's sewer laws, our sewer laws and stuff like that. But I just, I just can't believe that there's only one person out there or, you know, I would've said, we'll reject this bid and go out again, you know? I mean, it just doesn't, I always get nervous when you only get one bid.
I guess part of that too. I mean, you know, you come up with, the second tanks now are 100, well, 280 is the proposal.
Right.
And then you're talking about trash pickup and I have a couple of questions about that. People have been asking me to ask questions, so I'm going to ask questions.
Okay, good.
We have 1,100 people in this village, you know, and you're, you're talking about average, middle-class people. We have people coming in here from all over looking for homes and the homes go quickly here, you know that. But you're, you're asking more and more of our residents to pay higher for this, higher for this, higher for this, you know? And I'm sure that their salaries are not going to increase to the point where you're asking them to agree with a 16% increase in a salary. I mean, even if you look at 5, 5, and 5, which is, I think, a little more reasonable, doing 16% the first year is so much more costly than 5, 5, and 5, if that's what you choose to do. You know, think about how that sounds to people who are trusting all of us to make the correct decisions and to do the best for them. And they're making, trying to make their way. They went through COVID too. We all went through COVID. My God, we delivered meals for weeks and weeks and weeks because we were trying to support people who were having a hard time. So you're asking for all of these increases and you're asking them to say yes and you're asking them to go along with that. And you've got one bid and it doesn't sound like too much effort was put into getting other, other prices. I hope that that happens in all fairness to our community. But you can't turn around and ask for all these increases and then say, well, we're just going to raise their salary 16%. I don't think people are going to be able to swallow that really well. And they're not because I'm hearing all kinds of stuff. I'm not sure why we don't have more people here because they were coming, but apparently they're, they're not here tonight. Something must've come up. But people are very, very concerned.
Well, like you said, they should be here.
But we're telling you, we're telling you. And I hope that you think about all of those people when you make decisions on voting for the, for the budget, when it comes time to do that.
I think about all the people when the power goes out and our guys gotta go out and fix it.
I know that, Joe.
And, and they're paid what they should get paid, market value. That's what we're doing here. We're not paying them $51 an hour. National Grid's even higher than that. We're not doing that. We want the boys that are here, they're dedicated, they do the job for this village.
I'm well aware of that. Please think about the other people that live here. You've got to consider the people that live here and what's fair for them.
I do. And that's why I worry about losing, losing somebody and not being able to replace them.
I've never heard one person other than you, I'm sorry, say that they had any intention of going anywhere.
How, you don't know that? How do you know what?
I'm just telling you.
I don't want to use names here, but how do you know?
They've never said that to me. In all the times I've worked with them for 24 years, no one's ever said, I'm looking for some, oh, excuse me, one, one person did, Jenny, you're right, one person did. And they came back and said, what a mistake we made. Because the conditions anywhere else are not like here. They're not.
The other, that's it.
Go ahead, I'm sorry. No, no, that's okay. I'm going to be quiet.
He's gonna... Do we still have our zoning officer?
Yes.
Okay. I've been kind of driving around the village and there's a lot of zoning things that seem to be not being done. Do I have to come down and make complaints about all these zoning things?
Sure. File. Yeah, I'm going to fill out paperwork.
The one is the house on Main Street that...
Can I just speak on that one? I did ask Joe and Gary and I are going to go look at one of these places.
Okay. Because I'm real concerned.
I used to do home inspections and I know what is proper for zoning and stuff. And Gary, of course, does too. We're going to start looking at these places. That's one of my goals is to make this a good-looking community.
Yeah, because really, if you go through the village, people are fixing up their houses. I mean, we've got the one next to up, there used to be sacs that lived there. Lee, Lee lives there now. Zimmerman, he's fixing that house up. There's two houses here that have been fixed up. Buffalo Street looks great except for one piece of property. And that needs to be addressed too because I'm worried about rodents, raccoons, all kinds of stuff. That is a junkyard in the backyard. So there's your second zoning.
He's aware of that also.
And I think there was one other zoning that I was concerned. I was concerned about the parking that is on McKinsey Street. There's been several, there's several apartments there. And there's, sometimes it's very hard to get out on, from McKinsey's onto 19th. So I know we have regulations for parking.
Are they on the street, parked on the street?
Yeah.
That makes it difficult?
Yeah.
The street, the grass, the yard.
Oh, yeah?
Oh, I'm sorry, you live...
The Montgomery's old place has turned into apartments and it's been a very interesting year and a half since they...
And it's just, it's very difficult. I'm worried that somebody is going to end up getting into an accident. So I mean, I'm not, I'm not dreaming this stuff up, Joe. I really said, go around and see this stuff.
No, I'm not, I'm aware.
And the other is the building down here. I'm afraid that building's going to go down. And I don't, I know who owns it. I don't know if you can do anything about it, but that's, that worries me.
You talking coal, that's his place, or were you talking?
No, I'm talking about the building next to the bakery.
Oh, 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 yes.
I don't know how structurally that, that building is. So I'm glad, thank you Bob, for looking into it because I've kind of looked at all these zoning things and I, that's why I wondered if we still had our zoning officer.
Get back to the budgets. Any more discussion?
Please, the board, think about these budgets. Think about what you're doing. Think about the accounting and think about how it's going to affect. It's fine that you haven't raised the taxes, but our assessment values have also really gone up, which is a plus for everybody. But...
Even if they go up or we're going to lower our tax rate to take in the same amount of revenues we did last year. So even if the, you know, the county goes back with higher figures, we're going to lower our tax rate. We're going to take in the same amount for revenue on that line that we did, so.
And Joe, don't forget, I do want those, that information.
How important is it to get that out for you? Break it down, how much comes out of, how bad, I don't, I don't know the percentage.
If not, I know where you live.
I'll have him do that.
And like I said, and the zoning really needs to be watched. There's a lot of, a lot of stuff that's going on that should have been caught a long time ago for zoning.
We'll start looking at things and put some reports out.
Can we talk about that pretty much at every board meeting? There's always something brought up about zoning. Some of it's law enforcement issues with the... Some of it's law enforcement issues with the parking and things like that. I know we've talked to the Sheriff Department about that as well.
And I don't know, with Ralph and Rosie's, are these flags, are they, are they legal in the zoning?
Uh.
One time I was walking along, of course, it might be me, and I almost hit my head on one of them.
I think he's got new ones now, because he did have older ones out there before, and they were too low, and I told him, you gotta get them raised up. I think he can handle it. They had to be up, because they were slapping people in the face when they were walking by.
Oh, so I wasn't the only one?
No, you're not that tall. So he, now I, I think he's got new, because he's got new ours, so I, I think he just put some new ones up again. So we'll have to look at it again and see if they're.
Are they legal for our zoning, the flags?
As far as I know, they are.
Could you check on that, Joe, please?
Yeah.
I need to check on that.
And also, like, uh, the, they did get some flashing lights, like, you know, flashing lights. I don't know if those are legal or not.
They're not, no, they're not legal either. Flashing lights aren't legal.
So there's others there?
Is that here, or at the laundromat?
Both.
Laundromat too, I thought, right? I saw, remember seeing. Okay.
Do, do you know what happened with the contribution from the county? Was there a reason that it was decreased that much?
Uh, sales tax revenue you're talking?
Yeah.
Well, you know, the county came back and said they just don't have the money to allocate, so they came up with this. Uh, the towns and villages were saying, well, you know, we need a number. It's hard to do budgets without a firm number, so this is the number that they came up with, and they locked it in now. So that, you know, we all have something to go by for our budgets. With the new jail, I believe, being built, all the money that went into that, they didn't have, uh, the, the money to, like, in the old days. I believe we're, at one time, what, like, two-hundred-and-seventy-thousand dollars in sales tax revenue, roughly?
We have a much larger.
Much larger. Now, it's, they cut it all back to help offset the cost of the new jail. That's through the county legislature.
Thank you.
And another thing, Joe, is anybody working on any grants or anything out there? I know we don't have any money for a grant writer, but, um, there's gotta be some money out there for certain things for our village. I know we've gotten quite a few grant, you know, grant money in the past.
We've got a few in the works now. The Clean Community, uh, we've been awarded, uh, it's a ten-thousand-dollar grant that we, uh, we're gonna be getting. Uh, we got a huge grant in with the TDC for the substation upgrade that's been filed. That's, that's at, at the state level now. And to help, hopefully get that grant, that'll be a huge grant to help offset the cost of a new substation here. So that's in the works. We go art, we got the go-art grant for the concerts in the park this summer.
Yeah, I saw that.
We got turned down. We applied for the, uh, the park, for a park grant, and we got turned down. Along with the town, they got turned down also for Robin Brook. We'll be re-filing that again, trying again to get that one. Comes out every year. We're going back after that one.
Do we have a grant writer, or do we pay somebody to write the grants for us?
Uh, we've been lucky. The last two years, the county, and they did it again this year, this fiscal, uh, they're giving us five thousand dollars to, uh, to the village to, uh, you, to pay a grant writer. They did it last year too, you know, it's first come, first served. Uh, but we took advantage of that last year, and that's how we wrote the grant, the grant for the park. So, yeah, we take advantage of that. So the big one is the, the Fast New York brand, it's called, and like I said, that's been filed, and it's with the state now, so.
You know, even if the board looks and keeps track of, you know, oh, this is, like, I gave you the, the flyer there that they said there was some money out there. I mean, you know, if you see monies out there, and it's usually, once you get a grant, it's usually easier to get the, the next grant. We did that at the college, and that really did help a lot.
No, we've been, we've been trying, so.
There's a, there's a good basis out there for, you know, the reputation of our village for grants, and the grants that we have received. And I think, you know, when, when you look at the ones that we have gotten and build on those, you know, contact those agencies that we did receive grants from. Um, because we did get one-point-six-million dollars overall. And once you start working with those organizations, um, they tend to pay attention because they know that you've gotten a grant from them, they know that you've completed the project consistently, you know, with the materials that needed to be returned, and all the paperwork that needed to be done. And we were very, very careful to do that, so that the next round that comes along, there's a base for that. So, you know, take a look at the ones that we've gotten and, you know, see how you can build on those grants, because it's kind of a really good opportunity to miss if you don't continue to build on the stuff that we, we've already received. And I don't, you know, that's why it's hard when you, when you look for a grant writer or have somebody come in to let them know what those things are, what the grants are you already received, so you can build on that. Because you've got that, you've built that reputation, so it's important to try and do that kind of thing with the grants.
You're, you're very right. That's, it does help.
Once you get them, you know, it really, but you gotta jump on it, because there's, if you don't jump on it, there's twelve people behind you gonna jump on it.
We're aware of it. We tried to get one to, we fixed all the brick out here. Anna, you probably remember the brickwork, all that, it'd be done here.
Yeah.
We, we didn't get that one either. We filed, you know, we filed for that one, filed the grant. We didn't get that either, so.
Keep after that one.
Fortunately, uh, the county had more of a windfall of sales tax, and they did allocate more money to all the towns and villages, so we were able to use that money that we hadn't budgeted for, and we were able to fix the building, which was in dire need of restoration.
Once you get rejected, don't, don't take that as a no.
Oh, I, I know. You're gonna get rejected more than you're gonna be awarded. We know that.
Uh, the sidewalk line, does that include putting in new sidewalks, or is it just repair?
That's, that's repairs.
Yeah. The, uh, town, the village plan that we did years ago, um, putting in new sidewalks up toward, um, the, the four corners there was something that we wanted to accomplish. And just, you know.
Oh, we talked enough.
Yeah.
In front of the car lot, in front of.
Well, up to, um, the store there.
Yeah, C-store.
C-store.
Oh.
I mean, it doesn't have to be all done, but if you do a little bit every year, eventually you'll get, you know, sidewalk up there. Because a lot of people walk up there, kids ride their bicycles up there. It'd be really nice to have side, that particular spot to have sidewalks going up there.
And if you haven't, you know, gone through the comprehensive plan, I'm sure that you've received a copy of the comprehensive plan. It's a guideline. You know, it's not you have to do these things, one of the, you know, that was one of the suggestions that came up. But that was a community effort, um, that a lot of people contributed to. It took a couple of years to put that together. Vicki was on committee as well, and it's a guideline for taking a look at what kinds of things people were looking at for the future, that sidewalk being an example. Um, that's what informed the development of our new zoning laws that we put together. It came from the comprehensive plan, so, you know, it's a guideline, things that the community has wanted, including the town, and how all of us work together to put that together. So it's not the things you have to do one after the other, but it's a guideline of what the community was reaching out for, what they were looking for, um, as far as, you know, future development. So something to refer back to now and again.
And Joe, this is not with the budget, but do they still have for your new trustees? Does Nikon still have a workshop for the new trustees?
Uh, yes, we, you got new, uh, manuals too, right? We did, we did get that, and yes, uh, yeah, when they come out, if trustees wanna go, then we'll, you know, they're free to go.
They're, they're very worthwhile to the new trustees, and once you got a whole new board here. Uh, it's worthwhile, and it, it's worthwhile to go. First of all, you learn a lot, and second of all, it's networking.
Courtney just quoted us. It's open this year for Nikon, for our training, if we wanna take advantage of it. And that information, the last several weeks, Courtney's been sending it every week to all of the board, the new ones specifically.
Definitely worth your while.
Opportunity, right?
Yeah, it's worth your while.
Yeah, there's a lot to learn. I mean, it's.
It is.
Yeah, and we live here too. We wanna be, we wanna have the thoughts you have in mind. Absolutely.
And there are grants for sidewalks. We didn't get one, but we tried.
Hey, try again, exactly.
So that, that is something also that is worthwhile.
I know Holly got it. I mean, boy, they did a lot of sidewalks.
Yeah. Well, sometimes people like to walk around the village. I mean, it's a rotten village.
Right. You put in walking trails.
Mm-hmm.
Joe, one of the things that was on the list, and maybe this is for another meeting, had to do with the, the sewer budget. Um, you were talking about the UV installations there. That was, that was something that we were looking at getting grant money for at the time. And that was one of the things that was noted in one of the sheets, and I'm sorry, I can't pull which one it is. Um, that those would be additional costs for the sewer treatment plant. I didn't know if it was in the budget for that, or if you are still looking for the grant money for the UV installation, because that's, that would be huge, would be a huge asset, you know, to help pay for some of that work that still needs to be done up there.
I believe it was an extra one-hundred-and-forty-thousand dollars for that UV for the state mandate.
Mm-hmm. We were just, we were just working on, um, the grant applications for that, because there's a substantial grant to help with that since it's a mandate.
Who are our engineers now, Joe?
Clark Patterson Lee.
Okay.
He's been our engineer for a good number of years now. Eric Weiss, local. He keeps, he tries to keep a good eye out for us for grants that are available.
The benefits for employees are listed in the different budgets, I know. Um, do you know if it's still thirty percent?
For health insurance?
For the package, the benefit package.
I don't, and I don't know the def, the actual total. It's, you're talking off fringe and everything?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, uh, I don't have that number.
Did you get that for us, Joe?
Sure, yeah.
You know, it's just the other, the other part of, you know, increasing salaries and so on. You gotta keep that into consideration too. We knew that. That increases it all.
Yeah, Courtney, get that for you. We'll have that info.
The trustees and the mayor didn't get a raise, did they?
No.
That's the way it goes.
Always ask.
I wasn't sure I made any money at all.
Have to pay them for the privilege.
Yeah, that's right.
Courtney did leave me a note with some of the other towns around us, and their tax rate increases. Got Holly, five percent increase, Medina, thirty-five percent increase, and then last year they increased fourteen percent.
Well, how big is Holly now? I mean, Medina's a lot bigger than we are. We're talking, I always say a thousand people. I know, you know, it said a one-hundred.
Have you been to Medina lately?
Uh-huh.
Oh, my gosh. They are doing incredible things in Medina. Incredible things.
Well, that's why it's so high then.
Before Holly lost her diner, so, you know.
Yeah, yeah. I think, I grew up in Albion, so Holly, Medina, Albion, they're around five thousand people.
Yeah. I, I always figured Holly was similar to Lebron.
Yep, yep, very similar.
Brockport's nine-point-nine percent increase. They were nine-point-nine percent last year. And Albion is double digits.
That's why we tried a little bit.
Can't even get through their downtown with a bridge out. It's like Brockport. Unbelievable.
Oh, Joe, I wanted to ask you one thing. It says privilege of the floor on your meeting. He moved it down. Why do you make it to last for the, just before the adjournment? I noticed it on the last time, too.
Probably, well, you, we, I put it down lower because a lot of times that we, the audience, if they have something to say, they can hear, hear what we're talking about rather than us talking about it, and then they have privilege of the floor before we even speak about something, and then this way they can have their questions all at once at the end.
I was, you know, fair, huh? That's my two-cent opinion.
Can I ask one more question? Um, with the parks, um, it looks like there's quite a bit of money there. Um, and you're also, that's on top of asking for the donations.
Under parks?
Yeah. It says park, park upgrades enhancements to Hickory Park include the lights, the concrete, and the benches.
That's all. The benches and.
Is that, that's a separate?
Yeah, it's separate.
Or is that coming from our?
Well, no, it's, uh, it'll be coming out of general. What number? Are, are you on seventy-one-ten?
Um, yeah.
So are you looking at parks with the CE?
So, yeah, there's the twenty thousand dollars.
Yeah, it's a, it's the same as last year. Uh, yeah, that's, that's for, uh, park upgrades. Like, uh, we're gonna be, uh, pouring a floor in the front pavilion, concrete floor.
Yeah.
And we'll put the lights in.
And then you have the separate park committee.
The benches were donations that can come out of there. That was all corporate and residential donations.
Where's the money for the Hickory Park project then? Is that the benches?
That's a separate account, yes. That's the Friends of the Virgin.
Yeah.
Trees and Parks, yeah. That's separate. That doesn't show up in this budget. You know, we have our own budget for that. That's when we solicit donations for that, and that goes into that, that budget.
Joe, do you still assign your trustees to certain, like I know Bob's going to be doing the zoning. I thought Todd would be a good one for the parks. I didn't know if you funded that with her accounting background.
Yeah, well, she just got on board, so we'll be talking. I'm sure she'll be a great asset to the village, whether or not...
His ties to the county. I mean, you know, I'm just thinking, we used to, you know, be assigned certain things, so it helped the mayor and helped, and also we got to learn a lot of things by doing some of these projects.
Well, Todd's been valuable. He's on the Park and Tree Committee also, and he's been going around trimming trees in the village on his own, and...
He's a good painter, too.
Yeah. So, yeah.
I mean, I want them to earn their high wages, so, you know.
I hear you there.
I'm interested in helping with the grants. Okay. If I can help you, I'm more than happy to do that. Okay, thank you.
Because that's a, that's a big advantage to the villagers, the grants that we get.
We got this place next door that you can paint. Through the county, I sit on a, I sit on a disabilities committee for the county, and I've been looking into disability access for our parks and access to the equipment, and I think we're talking about perhaps a swing for disabled children within our park and things like that. So there are grants for those types of things out there throughout the state. So when I catch wind of those, we are certainly passing that on. So that's kind of a little project of mine that I, I take to heart for sure.
We're definitely going to put that swing in the park. One of the residents brought, sent me an email asking if they have a handicapped child, and they would like to, you know, see if we could get a swing by all means.
We're probably one of the like parks in the county that have wheelchair access to its paved, you know, path that has been put into that equip, that exercise equipment that's been sitting there for years.
Well, that Quanis Park up on, on West Main is wonderful, wonderful for handicaps. And I surely must have got, got that on a grant.
Absolutely, they sure did.
Now...
Well, that's good. And like Bob's saying, he's taking an active role, you know, the code guy here to check into some of these things.
Thank you.
Thank you!
Thanks, Julie. Thanks, Grace.
Anything else in the budgets? I know we don't see eye to eye, and that's good, you know. We're all thinking the same, but we're not thinking, so...
I guess I would just ask that, you know, as you said, the community has been wonderful, donating money and so on for some of the projects that have been going on, and I think they've been very generous. The, you know, the increases that we can't do anything about, I mean, there's going to be an increase in sewer pumping, I would imagine, no matter if you look in other places, but, you know, maybe take a look. Just take a look. Since there was one grant and you called one other place, you know, other names have been mentioned to me about, you know, these companies are getting bigger, they're younger people, they have much more staff, and unfortunately, AD Call is struggling with their staff. They're not able to keep the number of employees that they've had in the past. So things are not going as well there, so maybe, you know, double check. There are other places. I mean, I know we've had them for a long time, but, you know, we have to think about the community. We have to think about the people that live here. So, you know, all the other expenses that are coming up, the donations that have been made and so on, I think we need to think about raises and how it impacts everybody, and how the whole community sees that as far as their pocketbook with all the other things that are happening. And then, you know, giving that extensive a raise, I think, is, is kind of difficult to swallow. Just my opinion.
As I said, we're not always going to agree, you know that.
Just so you can go home and tell Sally that I asked about the library funding. Looks like that's gone away. I know we are sustainable, but it was always a gift from the village. And then, just like a question, I find with the 5,000, but does the youth program, is that the rec program?
Summer rec?
Yeah, is that what that is? Okay.
We did put in for a grant for that, too. Hopefully we'll get that. We haven't heard back on that.
Okay. Why aren't we proposing to take away the $1,500 from the library?
They're, they're their own taxing entity now.
Yes.
They're not even allowed to, I believe they're not allowed to receive tax money from a municipal like us, because they're their own taxing. Would you agree with that, Hannah? That's what I was told.
There's a way to gift. There's a way to gift, but I would double check to make sure. Because you don't want it to look like double dipping where you're doing tax dollars, collecting tax dollars, and then using tax dollars coming here to then gift. But there is a way to do it, but I don't remember exactly what it is.
Because I know when the library presented their budget, they had nothing in there for the Village of Origin before we did anything here in their budget. There was no line item on it. I had an awful lawyer. If they spoke with a lawyer and maybe the...
It does show up as a separate line item on your taxes, so they are independent.
Oh, yeah, no, I know. I just thought from the years in the past, it was always told to us it was a gift, the 1,500. So I was just, that was one of my things.
That's a good question.
Please report back to your wife.
There are so few things that we can take our littles and walk to in the village. It's just nice that the, the library does so much for the community. There's so many programs that, you know, we have four, six, and 12 that we can just walk down the street to do instead of having, having to go other places. So it would be nice if we could give them that.
It's definitely an asset.
Yeah, they're definitely an asset to our community.
I think the same thing Hannah was with Dylan Grant. You know, we stopped giving to Dylan Grant too, because it was double dipping. Because it was coming out of the town taxes. So it's kind of a double dip, so... Any other questions? Okay, with that then, if there's no further, I'll have a motion to close the public hearing.
I make a motion to close the public hearing.
Your second? All of you favorite?
Thank you all for coming, by the way.
Thank you.
In the, when I were here for the initial negotiations, would it be worth table on right now that we're going to talk about?
What were the issues?
Okay, I don't know.
It's inconvenient to have Courtney to help answer questions.
Yeah, absolutely. I'm in favor of that. I just, I don't... Yeah, I'm just saying that, you know, she and I weren't in the negotiations, and I can, you know, if there's still questions and stuff, should we...
If you, if you've still got questions.
Well, I mean, there was a lot of questions that people raised. They wanted salaries and things like that. And it might be worthwhile for us to, to see. I'm just saying.
Okay, absolutely. Well, schedule another meeting then. You have that, or we got those two public hearings on the 8th.
Do it before that or after that?
Is there a deadline for getting the budget done?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah?
It's not done by June 1, that goes into effect.
Okay, well, we get it.
Goes into effect either way.
I see. You know, how do you know?
Day 8 will work for me.
Yeah, you can get here early if you want.
We're already here.
Already here at 6:00.
6:00.
Yeah. Would you have to legally open another public hearing in order to do that?
No.
Courtney will be here, right? Answer questions? And table it for the 8, for the vote, the vote. I make a motion to table. Then I could do that.
Okay.
Yeah, I agree. I second.
Day 8? Sorry, so day 8?
Yeah.
Thank you.
For voting on the budget. You can ask Courtney any questions you want. Do we need a motion to adjourn us? What have we done?
No, we still got the lease to go.
Oh, the lease, I forgot. Okay, I did.
Anne, I'm glad you're here for this. Maybe you can give us some light on what happened back in the day with the Bondwell lease. It was Vice President of Bondwell signed the contract, and then why, why did it fall through and never...
What happened was that we were trying to buy the piece of property, because having a substation on it, having the electric building, building on it, and then the gardens we eventually developed there, we were trying to purchase that piece of property. If the new substation were going to be there, it was kind of, you know, we want it on property that the village didn't own. So we worked with them for, I can't even tell you.
Years.
How many years it was.
Well, they kept changing companies.
Yeah, and Bondwell, the last time we worked with Bondwell, we were going through Canada, because that's where their offices were. And the lawyer here was working with the lawyer there, and it just became extremely cumbersome, and it was becoming costly. And for a dollar a year for the lease, you know, we knew they were leaving, so it was, you know, let's wait until the new company comes in and see if we can negotiate something of a sale with the new company that's here now. So I don't know where, where that is, but we felt in the best interest of the village, that piece of property should be purchased. It should be part of the village, as opposed to us leasing it with putting, you know, million dollar structures there and the electric building and whatnot. So hopefully, and I see that there's a lease here, but hopefully, at some point, some kind of negotiations can be done to purchase that piece of property. It just doesn't seem like we should be building on it again and not own the property.
They won't sell.
Yes, they won't.
I'm not with them.
Yeah, well, we, we met, I can't even tell you how many times, and, and the people from Canada, from Bondwell came here. We negotiated. They told us we're this far away, you know, we just need a signature, and then it, it didn't happen. So, so they won't sell either at all? No, no questions?
No.
And what are the compromises then with...
50-year lease. The compromises are they want, which they hold all the cards here, they want us to provide them with $5,000 a year in labor for their lines when they go down, for our guys to go over there to repair their lines.
Yeah, we, that was part of the, that was part of the lease agreement before, too. Certain number of hours jobbing and everything was all, all scheduled out.
I remember.
So, yeah, I mean, the, the concern, I mean, I wouldn't be concerned about, too much about the jobbing. Definitely, that's, that's part of the agreement. It's, it's the structures that are on it that I think you really need to focus on and make sure that they're protected, because it's village property. Village property floating on leased land.
And like I said, unfortunately, hold all the cards here, you know.
Are you talking like fences and things, or what's your concern? Are you talking like fence, fence everything in?
Well, no matter what, it's their property.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, and our, our structures are on their property. So, so if you're leasing it, make sure, you know, and I'm sure you did this with an attorney, but make sure that your properties, the village properties are protected from whatever, you know, you can come up with as far as what, what any kind of liability would be with, with them owning the property itself.
Yeah, our, our attorney went over the whole lease and...
Mark, does still Mark? Mark knows, he's got...
How does the insurance work on that? Do we pay insurance on the building? They're not, they don't pay any, right, because it's...
No, we have to maintain.
Okay.
So this is really no different than what it's been, basically?
Probably. If Mark's doing it, I mean, he had it before. He was the one negotiating back and forth, so...
We got him to go 50-year lease. They wanted to go 40. I said 40 wasn't enough, so they did bump it up to 50. But we tried and tried to get him to sell. Couldn't get nowhere with him.
Well, you know, understandable, and I, you know, I think the, you know, compromise with, with taking care of their electric stuff, whatever their issues are, is not that big a deal. It wasn't. I don't think we used the 5,000 hours, whatever we had in there. I don't think we used it, but...
The way it changes hands, you might be able to negotiate with the next people, you know, as far as buying something. Who knows?
As long as, as long as your property is protected, you know, as long as the structures are protected.
You should have a copyright in your package.
So what do we need, a motion to accept this?
We need a motion to accept this lease, that lease.
Okay, I'll make a motion to accept your lease as stated within this full documents, 50-year lease for $10 a year.
Yeah, $10 a year, which we never... And then, yeah.
I'm leaving the motion. I'll second.
Okay, motion been made, seconded, that we accept this 90-year lease, 40-year lease. Or 50-year lease. Yeah, 50-year lease. For the property on Church Street, our electric. Okay, I was in favor. Close.
Courtney said he's going to schedule that for us. So we're probably all just going to take a few hours and then after you move it, then we can...
If you just let us know, Courtney can take your own, I can take your own.
I guess so, I'm free.
I would be very hard.
Be difficult.
But I have enough events and it's...
Well, it's on you then. You tell us when you can do it. Evening would be all right. I don't understand.
Yeah, maybe it's because...
I think it's lighter in some places, we could give you a...
I think it's lighter, and I suppose we could even do it. So I need to chat with Courtney about it.
I know, I remember this last fall.
Yeah, there's one like coming right up now. You have to get on that right now, but they're all, so I take advantage of the webinars a lot of times. So I don't know if you could do that in your workday or whatever, but we do have webinars that come up on certain topics and, you know, half hour, what if I made an hour?
And then how do you get notified, you know?
Through email.
Okay, I mentioned that today that I have that because...
She was sending me trainings. I'm going, I still need these? Because I was on the zoning board. She goes, oops, no, you only know. I'm staking, I still had to get training hours, you know, she sent them.
Okay, so if you have any other questions, you gonna hold Courtney, okay, prior to having a meeting? Because that's gonna be a busy meeting.
Oh, sure.
And that way we can just load on it, okay?
So that, public hearings on that little chunk of Landmark, on Gibson Place.
Motion to adjourn?
Privilege of the floor.
I'm sorry, sorry.
Safe pavilion. We had an event there a couple of weekends ago, and, oh, the disc golf, disc golf. And it seemed that the maintenance is not what it used to be. The floors needed mopping, you know, what else was there? The bathrooms weren't clean. There are cobwebs everywhere, unfortunately. We were there for the BBCA meeting. Did you notice the bugs? There were bugs everywhere inside that building.
We don't know where they're coming in from, either.
Well, the other thing is, there was a leak in the roof, like, what is that, west of the porch roof. And it was wet inside, and we had to pull all of that out and replace it because it got moldy and whatnot. So the roof was fixed, and it's seemingly been fine, but when we went in there in the morning of the disc golf, and again, for the BBCA meeting, you could smell this musty smell in there. So I think maybe it should be checked just to be sure that that leak hasn't opened up again. And I don't, I don't know how things are going there. I know that it's used a lot, and I, and that's a joy to me. But we had it cleaned after every event, and I, I don't know if that's still happening, but I've had several people approach me about the fact that they've had events there and not just the BBCA and stuff. And it wasn't cleaned, and they were embarrassed. So I wanted to just relay that to you so that, you know, it's, it's another asset here, you know, brings people in, and it's been very successful, and I would hate to see that reputation change. So, you know, for whatever reason, whatever reason it happened, or it's, you know, in the, in the condition it's in right now, maybe it just be spruced up a bit and whatever.
I know, we, we discussed this last few days ago, and I told Courtney about it, because, man, I was in the recording, there's cobwebs up in the van, and I go, you know what's going on, and so he's, he has reached out to the woman that cleans the office here, see if she's interested in...
A sixth grade student.
And clean, you know, give us a quote for cleaning up there also, so. The guys just do. The DPW guys, they just go in there, but like I said, I, I look, I look at everything, and I see cobwebs up there. They've been since cleaned, because I told Courtney to clean that, but...
The, the other thing is, I had, was at an event last fall in the evening, and the porch light, the light over the porch was not working, and I was wondering if that had been fixed.
The outside lights?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's been fixed.
Okay, that's it for me.
Thank you.
Thank you all for caring about all of these things. I really appreciate it. I know people in this community appreciate it. And thanks for jumping on board and taking it on, and Bob, you too, and Todd sticking it out some more, and Mike and Cheryl, you know, thank you. We appreciate it very much.
Motion to adjourn? Second?
All in favor?
I gotta write this down.